So I can't, Brian told me that we can sign into that. You're going to do what? Well, because it's extremely works. No, the whole, all the, we're running it. And I'll have the mayor turn it off. But I don't know if the mayor will be there for this. No, I'll show you how we put it.
Yeah, we're back from our, give her some time.
It's time to make the question. We should, you know what? Can you give me a, uh, something else?
Can you, can you, can you follow up tomorrow?
Can you, can you, can you?
No, Brian said to shut it down.
He did.
But this is what I, I'm, I'm, yeah. Yeah.
I'll have, I guess, I've been having, give me five of them. I've got five people at least.
Excellent.
And people have been asking about signs. We have no sign. Is that just because they, yeah, they're saving money?
Well, I don't know whether it's that or whether it's screwed up and never asked.
Oh.
No, like, it's like, what? I've been, yeah.
I'm not ready yet. You can see how it's gonna come out.
Hey, it's a new tune.
Yeah, about the outside side.
Yeah. That's, um, on the list.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Brian, yes? Brian, yeah, how are you? I haven't seen you in a long time.
Yeah.
How are you? Good, I'm good.
You have a day I love, actually.
A what?
Just give it, just give it to him.
You did?
No, I said, just give it to him.
Oh. I'm like, the things with my daughter's name, she's like, how many play, or, uh?
So?
Well, every sign.
You can, I went up to her, fine, day after election. You think that happened? And then about ten people throughout the day showed up. She couldn't be proud of it. It was gonna be Hillary or Meredith, but I always lost.
Oh, really?
We're Meredith.
I was Meredith.
Your mom right here.
Just daily. Yes.
Okay, that's all.
I know, I've been ca- I've been careful. It's like you can, um, write things. We're gonna just, huh, for a minute. Write that down below. It's that, really, let's go. Hey, man. Who's the question? Question's okay, I don't know. It's right here. Oh, God. How do you hear it? Uh, you can't hear the other?
I have a shower on your arm. I'll be late. You're probably there to bring us up.
Oh, I work, I need to do the shower on your arm. Oh, yeah, that one too.
Yes.
Just to, just to try to understand.
No, no, I just, we're, we're.
I think they're fine. Oh, yeah, probably.
Good evening, everyone. If you'll join me in the Potsdam side, we'll begin tonight's meeting.
My pleasure. This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Follow me to order. Volco?
Here.
Here?
Councilor Armstrong?
Here.
Councilor Kelly?
Here.
Councilor Bell?
Here.
Councilor Palmer?
Here.
Councilor Casper?
Here.
Here. So, we have, uh, one item on our agenda tonight, and of course, it is preceded by a public comment period. Obviously, uh, your presence here indicates that, uh, you have a great interest in the topic. Um, so we're happy to have you here. Uh, we've had, uh, a sizable group before, and one of the things that we do is we ask that there not be a lot of repetition of comment. And in fact, if you have a spokesperson that you'd like to, uh, appoint to speak to us, uh, for the, the body, that helps a lot as well. Obviously, uh, just your presence certainly sends a message, so, um, it is now the portion of our meeting where anyone who would like to address the councils invited to step to the podium and share their thoughts with us. Sure?
Uh, good evening. My name's Gary Brandstetter, I'm the president of the Plattsburgh City Retirees Association. Uh, here we are. Your loyal, hardworking retired employees who have given the citizens of the city of Plattsburgh as much as forty years of their lives in service to the community. Back here to ask you to honor our contractual benefits for healthcare. Last October, the common council passed a resolution authorizing the city to force Medicare-eligible retirees off the city's self-insured health plan through Medicare Advantage PPO plan through Humana. That resolution required that the preapprovals of the Humana plan must be, thus mirror those of the self-insured plan, and that the Humana plan must be comprehensive and universal. Mayor Calgon commented at the time that if the Humana plan did not meet those stipulations, he would not sign it. The Humana plan turned out not to meet those stipulations, but the plan was approved anyway against the council's own resolution. The council, uh, voted to approve the Humana plan before the city had even obtained the plan documents. So the vote was before the city officials, city residents, and the retirees that would affect were able to ascertain the terms and benefits of that plan. The City Retirees Association brought a lawsuit against the city. It sought an emergency court order preventing the switch to Humana for many reasons. First, the vast majority of the city's retirees have contracts that guarantee them the right to stay on the city's self-insured plan. This is a right that they earned through negotiating in good faith with the city, and we trusted that the city would also honor that. The employees and retirees have always honored all the provisions in their contracts, and all we ask is that the city do the same. Secondly, the retirees were concerned that they would lose important insurance benefits in the city's rush, uh, rushed attempt to put them on a new plan. The association includes retirees with serious and life-threatening conditions, and who have relied on the comprehensive self-insured plan of the city to receive that life-saving treatment that they need. Because the city approved the Humana plan before anyone knew what benefits and restrictions it contained, many retirees were faced with tremendous uncertainty and stress, not knowing if the treatments that they needed would be approved. And if not, would they be able to continue to afford them before they go bankrupt? This concern has been justified. This year, the retirees who were put on Humana plan have been forced to pay higher copays for prescription drugs and doctor visits, and have even had to change doctors that they'd been seeing for years because their doctors would not accept Humana. The Mayo Clinic in Phoenix, Arizona, told one concerned retiree who used them, and I quote, "Under no circumstances will we accept Humana." That's a very telling statement. Now, Humana has announced they're pulling completely out of the area at the end of the year. These problems demonstrate the importance and necessity of approving an insurance plan, change only after the common council, city residents, city employees, and the city's retirees have had the ability to read and assess the proposals, to make certain they comply with the law and the collective bargaining agreements. Today could be a good day. It's not often that when we do something wrong, we get a second chance. But this is your opportunity today. We've heard that the common council might be trying to adopt another substandard healthcare plan as quickly as possible to replace the terrible Humana plan. I implore you not to do this. Don't make the same mistake twice. A summary of a plan such as the five pages that we've all seen that compares the plans is not enough to make a decision. Uh, the common council, the city residents, and the retirees need to see the insurance company's documents, which contain all of the plan's terms and have a legal effect. And I believe that's called an E O C, explanation of coverage. Just within the last couple of days, United Healthcare has just announced they will no longer offer Plan F after December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. And they had previously announced back in June that they're withdrawing from seventy-four point five percent of the counties in the United States. I wouldn't be surprised if they were gone any year or so. Again, I implore you to take no action until we have the information that we both need, to make an educated, informed decision on the proposed, proposed plan. And to make a determination as to how the proposed plan would impact the bargained-for rights and the needs of the retirees who have devoted their lives to the citizens of the city of Plattsburgh. Thank you.
Good for you, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Well, Bruce Corle, um, I had a little speech to say, but I'm not gonna say it. I think Gary gets the point pretty well. We had a, a meeting with, with the counselors and the mayor a couple of weeks ago. And, um, I've tried to, you know, inform some of the counselors of what, what's been going on as far as this, and, uh, I think we all know that what we're talking about with Plan F compared to the Blue Shield is there's no out-of-network coverage. And the mayor himself gave us an email from Judy Tylo saying that, um, that, you know, uh, United did not provide any out-of-network, uh, coverage like we have now through Blue Shield, or could any other supplement do that? And like we are here this year, and la- uh, like last year, we don't have any plan documents, we don't have any drug formularies, we don't know what's covered as far as, you know, prescriptions. Some people are taking, you know, many prescriptions. I sent out an email to the counselors showing them that a lot of, uh, doctors are not even accepting Medicare anymore. Specialty doctors, the Mayo Clinic, uh, ca- cancer treatment centers, they're not even taking Medicare anymore because they don't have to, they don't have to accept that, that pay rate. So, uh, what people have been falling back on and having is the eighty percent out-of coverage, uh, that we do have with Blue Shield, which is very important. And, you know, I mean, when your own person from First Niagara says that they can't provide that, and no supplement can, you know, I think that's telltale of what's to come. Uh, also, you know, in this motion that are, that's being made tonight, um, I don't even know how, how it can be made. I mean, you're taking all the, uh, city retirees on Medicare and, uh, putting them onto Plan F with Humana, not only breaks the contract that we retired under, but it breaks the current contracts of the current employees. Um, I've talked to a few of the unions and said, oh, this is bad, they're gonna, uh, grievances in, and need be go to arbitration over it, because it breaks their contract. And not only br- and, uh, not only does that, I mean, we have a, uh, injunction with a Supreme Court judge that's still in place that says that we have to remain on blue until that injunction's done. So, I think this resolution tonight is very premature because we don't know what's gonna be going on with that. So, um, I hope that I, you know, I ga- gave you enough information on the emails that were sent out. Uh, like Gary said, three years this Plan F is being phased out, so you can keep it if you have it, but it, it becomes so expensive because there won't be any new people joining it, it won't be on, it won't be sustainable. So, that's what I have to say, and, uh, I hope that I do the right thing. We, uh, you know, don't like being put in the paper that, you know, for us to keep our insurance that we all worked for and agreed to in a signed contract with the, the city at the time, that we're responsible for a large tax increase. I don't like the, you know, I don't, I don't see that as, as being fair to us, and, uh, I just hope you, you guys, uh, vote the right way tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you good? The reason we pause is we're not sure that the sound's getting on our, our streaming. We've got a text that, uh, someone's having trouble getting it. If, if it's been recorded, however, it will be available on the recorded version that we, that we'll put up if, uh, if online one doesn't. Anyone else care to address this? Appreciate it, then we'll continue with our agenda.
It's all that the city shall no longer provide health insurance benefits through the self-funded traditional Blue Plan or the premium-based Humana company to Medicare-eligible retirees, and all such Medicare-eligible retirees shall be provided with health insurance benefits pursuant to United Healthcare Plans F and D, a summary of which is attached.
Moved by Counselor Casper, second by Counselor Bell. Discussion?
The plans F and D, uh, where are they coming from? Why are those being?
What do you mean?
Why are we going to F and D? Of both?
The proposal, uh, well, Plan F is, uh, is, are plans that are approved by CMS, which is the, the Medicare, uh, governing agency at the federal level, to provide, uh, the one hundred percent payment of all covered Medicare, uh, items. So if Medicare currently pays eighty percent of any medical cost, the Plan F must, by federal rules, pay the other twenty. The Plan D is a prescription plan, and it's designed to avoid the very famous donut hole that, uh, prescription coverage has. So again, it's, it's one to fill those gaps where, where standard Medicare doesn't cover, um, and it has, the significant point is that the coverage is, is, um, substantially the same. The copays are, are, there are some differences in copays, as you'll know from, uh, from the summary.
Okay, so all the, uh, supplement policies?
Yes.
Are out. Why F, because it's the best?
Well, if you, if you get, if you look at your, if you, you know?
Cause I went to G, and there's not a whole lot of difference. I'm just wondering why they said F.
Um, F has always been touted as the most comprehensive plan that's out there.
Okay.
Uh, it is the one, if you look at, if you look at the chart that's in the, the Medicare book, it is a hundred percent from top to bottom, uh, covers all the medical expenses.
It's a real problem.
Well, my, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, just with respect to the concerns that were raised about our prior, um, decision, that I want to assure you that with the information I had, even as stated by Mr. Brandstetter and, uh, the mayor's assurance that whatever discrepancies there were in coverage would be made whole, I felt that I was making a fair, uh, a fair decision at the time. But, of course, uh, you, I've, we've all had a lot of time to evaluate and reevaluate the decision, um, not only in terms of the actual, um, uh, plan, but most importantly for me is the process. And looking back on that time, I almost immediately regretted that it, it just wasn't an inclusive and, uh, the kind of process that would bring concerned parties to the table in order to discuss all of the options. And, and so that people could feel satisfied with what the proposal was. We had a very, um, you know, short period of time in which to consider this. I mean, actually, there was an extension so that we had more time to investigate. Um, but looking back, I feel as though the smarter thing would have been to have all of the stakeholders at the table to discuss this plan, whatever plan change there was, or if in fact that was even a viable idea. And so, uh, considering what is left up to, led up to this moment, I don't, I certainly don't want to make the same mistake. I feel as though, um, in, in part by evidence of your concern expressed by your presence here, uh, and certainly what I know of the process, that there's a lot more that can be shared between all interested parties. Um, this was what I kinda looked at last year, and I, it didn't even, I didn't know how lacking that information was. If there's a request for more information, it should be honored. And certainly, um, aside from all of that process, um, that difficulty with process, whatever concerns are being brought up in terms of the specifics of the plan, I, I really need to hear assurances that, that everyone's satisfied, everyone's satisfied that they're, um, on a par. With Shield and United.
Bruce, sorry.
I got a lot to discuss, but I do have a question on that.
Sure.
Uh, on the initial resolution, I'm still con- still confused on it, but maybe you can clear it up before we get a little further along. The first line says, "The city shall no longer provide in health insurance benefits through the self-funded traditional Blue Plan or the premium-based Humana Company." I was under the impression that we were just, the resolution would be about the Humana company because of losses, and we couldn't do the other thing. So, I, I, uh, could you clarify that a little bit on this matter?
Sure. Yep, sure can. Uh, and it relates to, to some of the comments that were made earlier. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the things that, uh, that has happened, uh, since last year is that we have continued to negotiate with our unions, and as, uh, noted, we settled with the ASME union, uh, this spring, including, uh, the pla- this very plan, uh, as a part of the healthcare plan for ASME folks going forward. So, um, that's a, uh, so it has been vetted with, with, uh, at least one union at this point. Um, what happened then is, is currently we have five plans, five health insurance plans, and with the negotiations with ASME, we now end up with seven. Um, uh, this would be a, and then the, uh, Humana or United would be the eighth. And of course, we're trying to simplify. Um, the, uh, the negotiation with ASME was to reduce it really to three plans, uh, the traditional Blue, one, um, PPO to replace the four HMO-like plans, and then one for Medicare eligibles. Um, and, uh, since that was th- uh, a, a, something that had already been negotiated, we wanted to be sure that first of all, our resolution would include any ASME retirees who became, or any ASME employees who subsequently became eligible. Uh, secondly, uh, as was noted, there is currently litigation, uh, with the Retirees Association. Um, there was a, as part of the issuance of, uh, of the injunction about moving anyone, uh, there was a requirement for the litigants to post an undertaking of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's our understanding that hasn't happened. Uh, and then this, uh, resolution would then allow us, if the judge lifts the injunction, and if the judge otherwise allows, to move folks that have yet, who have not yet moved from our Blue, uh, to this plan as opposed to, uh, having to leave them where they are. So it, it really does three things. The, the more important one, I think, for your consideration is the last one, uh, that this not only affects the seventy-one-ish people that are currently on Humana, ultimately, if the judge allows it, and only if the judge allows it, uh, it would apply to the rest of the retirees that, uh, are in this system.
Okay, that's part of it. Now, the next follow-up to that is, what happens if we don't pass this? What goes on January first? Uh, what do the retirees fall back on from the shadows?
Well, the seventy-one people who are in the Humana plan would have to be, uh, placed in another plan. Um, I'm assuming that, uh, without action of this c- uh, council to, to make that decision, that would be then their decision. I'm assuming they would all go to Blue, uh, which would, uh, be expensive and, yeah.
Sure.
But that's, I mean, I, that's what I, that's what I think would happen.
I agree, I was, uh, so, uh, so what I do? No, I'll, I'll make some comments over there unless people close out and not making no comments.
Sure. You're good, man. They're in.
I just have some questions about the injunction that is in place, so we kind of were, we listed, that, 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 so now, are we, uh, are we, uh, doing a little bit of, well, do you have a question? I think we're, we're, uh, I think we're all fed, but I'm, uh, gee. Well, if Judge Mueller will, uh, didn't lift the injunction, were any people doing insurance planning? They spend all the?
No, no. If, I mean, depending on, so if, if this resolution passes this evening?
Right.
And Judge Mueller, uh, lifted the injunction, then all the re- the Medicare-eligible retirees would be moved to the United Healthcare F and D supplement to govern, in government Medicare. If Judge Mueller doesn't lift the injunction, obviously, then the hundred and twenty-two, I think it is, that are currently in Blue would stay in Blue, and the seventy-one that are currently in Manah could move to United. Um, and if this fails tonight, then likely everyone would be in Blue January first. Okay.
Um, if this were to fail tonight, what would, uh, be the possibility that, that we go back to the drawing board? And the retirees join us around the table and come up with, uh, a solution?
Only the calendar. Uh, I mean, in, in order for anything to be effective January first, really, uh, this is our opportunity. Um, it is very possible that if we made this decision a month from now, it could take effect February first, uh, two months from now, March first. The, obviously, the, uh- The, obviously, the, uh, the reason that, there's a lot of reasons why making it a, a January first, uh, uh, decision is important. It's a lot easier, uh, you know, technically, it's a lot easier on people. Um, it also, uh, would have a, a really serious impact on our budget, um, and that's, you know, uh, we have to deal with that as well. Um, and, uh, I mean, we had that discussion as well last year, where, uh, you know, if, uh, if the judge is right and, and, uh, two-thirds is worth four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, then that means that we're probably in the two hundred and forty or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. If the seventy-one Humana people go back to blue, it's probably going to cost us, uh, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's then about, what's the math on that? I guess twenty, just over twenty thousand dollars a month. So, it's just, it's out there. But it, it's really budgetary.
Well, you know, just a, you know, kind of a comment and opinion, uh, it seems to me that the only reason in my mind to have voted last year for the Humana plan was if it was at a par with the cross from Shield. The savings was a bonus. The savings was great. And so, if, uh, there's not a par, if this plan doesn't match, uh, and we are unable to save money, I say that we have to go with what is the right thing to do for the retirees.
Councilor Kelly.
Um, uh, last year when the Humana plan was, was proposed, I was very much in favor of it. And in hindsight, it was done kinda hastily. And I wish we could do it older. I wish we could have presented it to you like a month or so before we did. And I wish that you'd had a chance to weigh in on it before we, before we passed it. I think, unlike myself, just speaking for myself, you guys knew it was a stinker when you saw it. And, and I did. And I owe everyone an apology for not, for not recognizing and realizing that.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. And, um, I am concerned about this plan because it's being presented to you in the same fashion as the last one. And I, I'm a little smarter than that. I, I don't know for sure that this is a good plan or not. It may be, it may be one. It may do everything that your blue plan does. I really don't know. I see a lot of heads shaking. So, I, we need, that, that's the, the beautiful thing about dialogue is if we could discuss this with you, maybe we could come up with something that's satisfactory. Maybe we could find something that would satisfy you, our retirees, and satisfy the taxpayers for a little, for a little bill, which you, uh, we're not there. We could be, but we're not there. Um, I will say that, uh, many retirees live in my ward, and, uh, I've had a chance to speak with a few of them, and a lot of them have told me that, uh, we're not opposed to helping the city save money as long as we get what our, uh, contractual agreement says we should get. We're not opposed to that at all. And, uh, they, the people I've spoken to also understand that healthcare is a, is a moving target in this country, that it seems to get worse and worse every year. But the fact that fact shouldn't get in the way of your contract. You have a contract and we have to own it. That's it.
I, I, I'm ready. I'm trying to get myself all together. I, did you see me hold my cell phone on because I got notes? Because I think that some of you understand when you get older, you start forgetting things, so, uh, I'm begging your pardon to do that. And we still go have sound on our, we do now? Okay, good. Yeah, he didn't send it back. Good, I'm glad it didn't happen. I'm gonna go along with, Councilor, I'm trying as far as a year ago. Here we are again. When I decided and voted in favor of this, uh, Humana plan, I thought everything was good and everything was really right. And obviously, it wasn't. And we were wrong. We made a poor decision. Just like buying a car. When you think a car is good, and you buy it, and six months later, the engine fails. But with that, you have warranty. There's really no warranty here. I think our warranty has a lot to do with, yeah, well, with, with what Bruce and Gary, Daniel Point, Councilor Casper, Mayor Kalman and I met a while back. We presented this. Uh, I forwarded it to Bruce and had, had him send it out to everybody who could get it and who could understand it. There was a loophole. There was something that we found that wouldn't mix and be almost equal to what was going on, and that was the catastrophic insurance and the outer network coverage. We were sitting there optimistic that if that would have, we could have got that, it probably would have flown. It probably would have went. Obviously, that's not fair. So, we are not following up with what we said a year ago to try to be as equal, or close to. Because you know and I know that it always can't be close to. Uh, you want to get it as much as possible. I do have a couple of things I want to say, though. I've been called, aren't you my friend anymore? Okay? Just recently, I, I, and this bothers me because I, I, the people know me and really know me, they know I'm not like this was said to me. And I thought this was unfair, but I am gonna bring it up. I'm sorry, but if I have the time, it would be good. I read it for me, because I don't want to shirk it. All right. I have talked to at least a hundred retirees about your vote on the council, and they think you stabbed them in the back. I take offense to that. I don't ever go in the back way. I go right in the front and tell it to you at the end. So, the person that said that it was unfair to talk about me and the rest of my council. Okay? And I wasn't offended. I really wasn't offended. I was hurt personally. It was last year when I sat around and looked at this room and I saw all my friends and all my father's friends, people I grew up with, that helped me grow up, gave me a hot dog, a hamburger, we went to field days and all that together. Uh, I thought I was doing the right thing. Because I al- always taught to do the right thing. Whether you should go to a wake or a funeral of somebody you really didn't like, if that's the right thing, you should do it. I just talked to that, with, with an employee here in the city today about doing the right thing. I don't believe it's easier for us if we do it the first of the year. It's not easier for all the people involved. It might be paperwork-wise, it may be budget-wise. I don't care about budget. I'm working on making a good budget. If we have to make cuts in other places, I think we can do that. I've never believed in getting rid of people as far as employees and layoffs. We riddled down last year's budget quite well. And I think we can do it again without having to get rid of people, employees, and without having to cut services out that should be done. Now, I asked the question earlier about what would happen if this doesn't pass? And it said, uh, most probably, everybody will go back to blue, which is where we were fourteen months ago. To me, that's not a bad alternative anyhow. Until you can find something that would be comparable. Yes, it's always nice to get something into place if you can save money. But again, it's more than all about the money. It's about the people. And I, for a year now, this has been me and it can be written. And now we have to do something that, and I don't want history to repeat itself. I don't want the people that have worked here for thirty years, or three years, or two years, or fifty-three years, to get anything less than what they were, they had last year this time. Right now, honestly, I'm afraid to get to be Medicare eligible. And that's not far away. I am really afraid because I might not have anything. Luckily, I'm on state with Cross from Shield plan. Gotcha. Okay? Yes. Okay? Okay? Thank you. But, but if you look and you read, and I don't like to read a lot. Without reading on this subject, fierce. And the plan is for this to get phased out in the next three years, just like Bruce said. I know my insurance is gonna phase out in the next three years. And again, you can't predict how a car's gonna run. You can't predict how an insurance is gonna go. Premiums are gonna go up. That's life. I mean, I have to predict as they go up. So, that, I'm not too compassionate to, but if something goes out the window, this city's gonna be a back in the same place in three years. For two hundred and third, more, because people are gonna be retired. And people are gonna go Medicare eligible. Somebody asked me today, what was I leaning to? If you listen to my thoughts, I think it's pretty obvious. Uh, I hope, I hope and I pray that tonight, when my colleagues make their decision on whether to pass this resolution or not, that you put yourself in their place. Again, I've struggled with the decision on Humana, but just put yourself in their place when you decide to vote. Okay?
I, uh, I'd like to just add a couple of comments. Um, I have both opinions and facts that I want to raise. I just, I'll, I'll try to identify each as I go through. Um, there's a couple of things that I just want to be sure we all remember. Uh, we've heard, said that the Humana plan was a stinker and that there was no warranty. Uh, in fact, the council did authorize a warranty. Uh, we did, uh, pass a resolution that said that anyone that, uh, that had, uh, costs above the six hundred dollar out-of-pocket, that, uh, we would reimburse them. And despite the fact that there were some comments earlier that we were hired Dr. Copes and those kinds of things, no one has presented us a bill for costs over and above six hundred dollars. So, the warranty that we established worked. Uh, I just, that's a fact. Uh, no one has given us a, a, a bill. Um, the other, uh, the other fact that I wanna, that I wanna talk about is that, uh, in relates to the, the question about having a discussion, we actually offered this very plan to the retirees association in March, and they chose not to discuss it until, uh, last, in a couple of weeks of September. So, it's not, that we weren't willing to talk about it, uh, but that it wasn't talked about. Um, and that makes a difference to me. That's my, that pieces my opinion. Um, and then I, I wanna just, this is, this is a, this is both fact and opinion rolled into one. I am in their place. Since I retired and I'm already of Medicare age, I am covered under a plan F and a plan B. And I am exactly in their place, and I know the quality of recovery. I have had surgeries, I have had all kinds of diagnos- diagnostic tests. I have not paid one penny for anything that, uh, that's, uh, so, so I understand when I'm talking about not a, not a, a, a will and no way of discussion. So, I just wanted to throw a couple of those out, just to give out, uh, Councilor, I'm trying to get to the floor.
Thank you. Well, and I appreciate the point you're making about how, that the offer to switch this plan in February. Uh, I, I would say that the circumstances for that kind of offer aren't necessarily one that you characterize as, as a collaborative process. And I mean, it was, it was part of a litigation. So, you know, I don't know what kind of chess game that is. But, you know, really, what I'm advocating is communication and collaboration. And when you have a group that is no longer a part of a collective bargaining unit, they don't have the means to negotiate in the same fashion that ASME does or any other union in the city. So, absent that formal process, at the very least, one might expect in order to be respectful and in order to, to make sure the communication is clear and the information that's being shared is understood, and in order for people to be able to collaborate and come to, uh, mutually beneficial agreement, is to sit down together. And that's what didn't happen then, it didn't, it isn't happening now, to my satisfaction, or apparently to the satisfaction of the retirees.
Councilor Dobbles.
Just a couple of points of clarification. When we hear that Humana is pulling out, it's pulling out where?
Well, what happened is, what happened is, uh, uh, in part due, well, actually, uh, due to the lawsuit, of course, we were not able to move the majority of our, of our eligible retirees into the Humana plan. And, uh, uh, the federal Medicare rules state that if the plan drops below fifty-one percent of its potential membership, they lose their right to offer that plan. So, it wasn't that Humana was withdrawing from the county, it was the fact that CMS said because they were less than fifty-one percent of the population, they were not allowed to vote in January.
And the warranty that we offered was even made.
Yes.
It didn't answer that for another trip. Is there been any things to make a difference?
Yeah, I got a good day tomorrow. It doesn't make any difference. Um. So I got the doors locked, so.
Huh?
I got the doors locked.
You have records locked?
Yeah.
The recording's still on, just a quick one.
Okay.
I did hear it come back a little bit. Ryan said that Chad could help me post the audio tomorrow.
Good.
Sure.
It's getting less expensive every year. Checking your bills every day.
Where's Richard? Oh, he must be out there.
Yeah. What is the cause of those? Uncleanness, uncleanness. You're unclean. I don't know. I don't know. Get together with our, uh, smart people?
I did.
Get together with our smart people and see what our options are.
Did you guys leave? They didn't consent. They were just out.
So in terms of, can I ask a quick question?
Me?
Um. Josh, just a second.
We're getting here. Those are all done.
No, much of what I would have said was said in the first remarks line. Re-standing, so I feel like I didn't want to add too much more to the conversation. And I'm, you know, pleased that we have time now to look at options. You know, to make sure that, you know, what all these retirees were promised is what we're seeing in the future.
I don't like those.
I think, you know, they're still going to be ready with their hand bases savings and.
Do you have a note?
A new plan is in effect as of January first. And it's to say we want something that would be, you know, meet all everyone's expectations and.
It's still recording, I never turned off.
May put on our promises that we've given to our shareholders.
Um, that is, is driven by, I guess. I'm not insane. Chief, are you staying? Yeah. I'm just looking for a little up to, uh, year-to-date budget.
Should we have brought our budgets?
No, we're not gonna work on the one.
Oh, okay.
No. Good. Please, I'm just waiting to find out if Jim's staying or not. Jim, are you leaving? Okay, good luck.
Oh.
Yep, good luck.
What's in the?
Oh, she is?
Grease is in the list? Yeah. Two gamulus. Okay, so this is, uh, the first preliminary budget session. And what I asked for is we could get a year-to-date from the managers and after that we can talk about the fund balance policy. So who wants to go? Just tell us where you are right now in the budget, what you're looking at as we're finishing off the year. Who wants to go first? Don't look at me like that one. He's excellent.
I don't want the fire department to go over their way over there.
Um, just before, before we ask the department, remember how he used to get those little graphs with the comparisons in year-to-date? The bar graphs that show where the each? Yeah. Well, I guess I was absent and didn't read three from my mailbox the last one. So the next one's coming up, the first in a member? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mike Brody, Brushford Public Works.
Wise guy.
We get our budget season from the finance, we, we, we just got the latest ones and we seem like we're pretty, pretty on pace for the year. Okay? Uh, number of months and number of months we got left, so. Uh, as you know, we've been having some major issues.
Yeah.
So we're, we're pretty much on pace.
Good.
Okay?
All right. That's all I need to know. We've got the raw customers from many lots. Steve?
Yes?
How are, how are you doing?
Uh, we're about eighty-four thousand over, that's about the sum of the one personnel change that we did not make that you're aware of. Um, and I can't think of why that might not be what we're gonna call. Um, and the cutting of one of our, um, management positions this year is by the conversion. So that was a position worth about forty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars, actually, but not a lot. Position, um, other than that, we've been really riding the line as best we can. There's certainly some service lost in this process, but, you know, anything, um, probably these people. Between different things, behind the scenes, um, but that's where we're staying right now. So there's personnel, there's, uh, there's over, um, not appreciated, uh, but there will be a good management very hard on that. Uh, of the budget transfers to get all of our line items correct. Uh, so there's, uh, over business some areas, it's under spending in others, trying to figure out how to make it to December thirty-first. Um, we're gonna present that probably in a month or so, just to be, uh, a very accurate visual of where that'll be. Uh, it's a lot, but in the end it's definitely much better than that sometimes, but, so that's what we're standing on.
Um, Chief?
Everything's on pace, uh, except for.
What?
Uh, the entitled, as we're.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They have a, yeah, from our, uh, budget schedule.
I do have, uh, we were doing well in our second ambulance.
Yes.
And from what I understand, the union, they're in a business about it, and they're not, not having to, uh, pay more income on it, and do that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear with, uh.
Say nothing?
Yeah, uh, we were, we were, we were, remember I kept commenting every time we'd get reports of good guys doing it, getting a second ambulance? And we're making no money, so other places don't make the money now. But the union agreed that, and it's going out of the creation, and they no longer can do that. So you're gonna see that increase, uh, the more mutual aid help is going to increase ambulance value, and we're not gonna make as much money. And, and I, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that, that hurts us a little bit. It's not for the. Thank you.
Um, I see.
Uh, sorry, I didn't really mention that revenue needs to be, you know. We had set pretty low goals for twenty-six, let's say about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um. I, I do think we're gonna meet that, and in fact, and I am super nervous this time of year, it's thirty-two percent of revenue. In the last year, so we're getting pretty, I mean, I can follow it. Um, I, I, it is possible that we can see that number to us that we're, uh. Um, so that does offset any of this, that's, you know, I just couldn't promise that in place, but out there. I think we can take that way, but it also, there's a lot of people out there that have to make the decision to go if they want to own one of the departments. Go one way, then go another, and sometimes it's, uh, control it as best we can, but we can't, uh, so. So that's something that we do have, I mean, we're trying to, uh, uh, uh.
I did forget to ask you a question, when you talked about the management, the extra money that was figured in, uh. Am I right in though, that you cut some other positions, our town during summer, that might have helped, for you that, right?
Yeah. A hundred percent correct.
So you're trying to, yeah.
And that's one of the, all of that was in recognition.
Right, 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 right.
These positions are recognized, so that increases transfer yield already.
Right, right. Right.
Change.
Yeah, okay.
That it just increases that, that transfer, so, uh, you're, you're correct, that's where I ended up having to take the cost, was to make it work.
So you're, exactly, that's what the point of thinking, you're trying to work it, so.
Yeah. We, we, we helped them on, in fact, we moved, we really raised our, uh, our, our, like, parks in different areas and, 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 and.
When I was eating a cupcake, um, at the time, but, uh, I wanted, uh, I had requested, I had requested info from Steve about the marina. And I, I know it's been a while since I've gotten back to you, but thank you for getting that to me. I'm kinda gathering some other information from other sources, and, uh, you know, we'll have a, a conversation about it sometime in the near future. But thank you so much for getting that to me, I appreciate it.
How about you?
Oh, um, oh, I'm sorry, and I just, one more, one more thing. Um, I know, um, last year, um, and, and you may have touched on this and I could have missed it, but I know that your budget was compressed last year when we came time to kind of go through everything. Is it uncompressed this year?
I don't know.
Um, I'm trying to remember, uh, there were a lot of different, like, kind of line items and departmental stuff that you had taken
Yeah, they changed.
where every other department had it, you know, line by line, and you would kind of group things together because you said it was, you know, it was easier for you to be able to kind of manage it all. I, I wanted, I would love to see how much of that went out, but I, I would like to see the uncompressed version this year when we start going through everything.
Yeah. The regular cadence or something.
I, I don't quite follow you, so what I, what I'd done was took, uh, a note, like, anything from technical special equipment and office supplies, for example. And what's the difference between the two?
Well.
And I, I don't have, I don't know the difference between the two, because even before I got here, they were using interchange. Uh, meaning, well, but on the money missing account, it's like that. So what I did was combine those two into one, so that instead of having two lines to worry about, I've got one. And that's what I did last year, there was no intention of future improvement.
Of course not.
The idea was to make it a lot easier to, uh, allocate funding from certain lines, because I could have fifty bucks in one place and a hundred and fifty in another, and I have two hundred dollars.
Right.
Well, and then, let, let me, let me, let me see if I can offer some clarity. The reason it was confusing last year is because the previous budgets were not constructed in that way, so it was difficult to make a comparison.
Or each.
But now that you have that, we have the history of that, so we can do a comparison.
If I have the choice in the state of San Antonio, in terms of what, what lines up using, spend.
Yeah.
So you would have twenty-sixteen samples, and you have twenty-seventh.
I just remember this, it was difficult to, to see when we were going from.
You were trying to explain, but it was just the kind of thing where looking at the figures and listening to the explanation, but kinda was, it was hard to keep up with yet.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I'll tell you, every, every year, it never works out the way that you projected fourteen months prior. I mean, that's what it is. Budget had to be in October one, it had to be to the mayor by about the twentieth or so of September. And what I'm doing at the twentieth of September is trying to tell the mayor and all of you, what's going to happen December twenty-seventh. And it's just not, like, it's.
Right.
I can stay within the limits and I can know, okay, we can't spend, or we're gonna be, you know, very purple, you know, and I've, we've been doing it as a department all year, and everything. Um, but in the end, it comes down to, you're gonna see from, uh, from Richard and I, and multiple, sort of, that clarification of just adjusting amounts here and there to make it work. Uh, and it's going to end up, if you look at, you know, every category within, let's say it's, uh, South Baker's Park, you'll see it was sixty-one hundred bucks we spent in twenty-sixteen. I'm proposing sixty-one hundred bucks in twenty-seventh. I may spend thousand dollars next year on interior, and I didn't spend it this year. But, uh, I won't need to make as many repairs next year, or I can, uh, this year. That's how, like, that's the only way I can do it, yeah.
I hate to do this to you, but you just made me think when you said South Baker's.
Where's the sign?
Yeah.
It's at the freight center. Um, our staff member, Josh, who was going to work on his last repair.
Okay.
Uh, so right now, um, you know, I, I put out the call from one of our other guys at the airport.
Okay.
But it was supposed to be done, it's spring or fall, shoulder seasons, um, you know, so I've lost a guy too young. So I've got somebody else to kind of take a look at it, if that doesn't work, then it's gonna be more expensive, so, uh, we're gonna, uh, try to.
No, I thought we were gonna buy it anyway, I thought that, that was what the, uh, light item was for.
Right. I, you understand.
Well, I know, but I mean, it was allocated, it was allocated. Okay, Kim, can you move on, because we've got fund balance policy.
That was a good point that you made, now that we got some to follow, I'm actually, I should be looking to do a lot of personal part.
Yeah, we're out there with this.
No, thank you, we can do that next year.
We have a budget to, to deal with, like, what we have.
Uh, as you said, all changes, I would just, you've asked in our budget, put it up on the other desk, additional, uh, new technical budget parts. We're trying to step over into our, bring a careful idea, um, of what I'm taking, we have to take this over, we have to, uh, through, through my deck, and I, I, I'd be surprised, uh, there. So right now, our budget's, uh, running far, uh, and we have budget transfers happening two months ago, card, uh, not many. So starting with the new, is that we're all working in one account, based on the red, and what's white, every company we switch. Uh, that's what, uh, that's, uh, hotter set, that's not something that we've done that way, so we did ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, potentially. We have a letter from the mayor, ninety-seven thousand dollars back, um, this is how, uh, we're, we're, uh, 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 uh. All this new budget is actually being a month ago. And we should follow the change, yes, so our contract allows us to, uh, in five days, we want to take, take a lot of changes, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, watch.
Anybody have a question? Okay, uh, we don't want anybody else here.
I'm interested in that, I remember because we still have two temporary provisions, and I know we're saving money by not paying, um, two or three?
Three. Three.
Two, two are paid right now, two be, and, and I know we're saving money by not paying any benefits. But I'm just wondering about, do you have any other things that you want that? And getting, can play a couple more people in there for me, so, you know, I appreciate both of us.
I'm glad.
Thank you. No, it is.
Good. Okay, um, then let's move on to the fund balance policy. Do you guys all have copies of it with you? Does that mean copies?
Mm-hmm. Uh, well, my.
Yes.
And I also have, um, an updated account of the fund balance. So, Richard, help me out, where we stand right now, we have, what, three point one percent?
Um, I have numbers that, uh.
Three point three. Um, projected general fund balance is three point three percent, is that correct? Jim just had you smooth run, did you have, did he run, or did you run? Uh, the dollar total is, we have three columns, so. It says. Uh-huh. I'm looking at the, have, what's in this?
Yeah?
That one's like peanut butter.
And that's why I don't.
You're not making sales.
It's just that we're trying to connect to, uh, it just, you know.
Right now, I'm, I'm, uh, yeah, 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 gotcha. Okay, so that's what we're here for.
Well, you need, you guys unleashed it, man, we two shut it, you follow us, we follow us. So, how you do this?
So where we are right now is that we're at two point five percent.
Oh, my gosh, oh, two point six.
Two point six percent. Thank you.
That says, okay.
Okay, right now, the available fund balance is six hundred thousand dollars. So the point, the point is that we passed this fund balance policy in July, or was it, was it July? And we had a discussion about, several discussions at that time, as to, well, we're not there right now, so we pass the policy and we're, we're not meeting it. So, but the point is, do you wait to pass the policy until you achieve it, or do you use the policy as the guideline? And as the, really, to reel you into it, so that's why we agreed to pass it, and so now, before we start the budget, and probably near the, the culminating part of, of doing the budget, let's think about building up the fund balance. So if right now we're at two point nine percent, we don't know exactly where we're gonna be at the very end of the year, at, you know, whether it's two percent, then we need to think about, we have a minimum of five percent, a maximum of ten percent. So we can use, which was my intent originally in this fund balance policy, to do some planning over the next three or four years. So clearly, we have a difficult budget, we're not gonna, I, I don't think that we're gonna have, uh, meet a ten percent fund balance in one year. That's not, that's not reasonable. And it doesn't help us to do any planning, it basically stops the city in its tracks. So just some things to think about, do we, what, do we try to front load in the first year, next year, to get to four percent, five percent? And then ease off in the following years, or do we think about, okay, let's try to make, let's try to go from two point five to four? So this is the kind of discussion I think, we don't have to make a decision to do this, it's just, this is the way I think we should be thinking as we're gonna head into looking at the budget and saying what numbers we're really working on. Because even though we don't need the fund balance policy today, the point is that we are gonna use it to meet that fund balance policy in the future. So what are your thoughts?
I appreciate you bringing this up, Becky, because you promised you would, um, at the start of the budget season, and you lived up to your promise, so, thank you very much for doing that. Um. I don't think we're gonna get five percent, uh, most of us ten percent, and, and, uh. However, if we can make a plan to help us determine how quickly we would like to get to five percent, and what we're willing to do each year to help us achieve that, and I, I think that'd be a, uh.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know, maybe, let's say, let's say we end the year with three percent, just to make a nice round figure, um, should we go for three and a half, or? I, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is, but I.
And I, and I would suggest normally, before we look at trends, how is fund balance is running previous years, but I don't think this is like previous years. I think we're kinda in a spec place here where.
Yeah.
Unless we go back many years, I, I don't, I think we're.
Well, and I, I think that's exactly the point, because we didn't, not on us, but us, on previous counts, if there wasn't a fund, fund balance policy.
No.
So, it was, the fund balance was going up and up, and, and by that account years ago, the fund balance would have exceeded our maximum. And so this is a kind of, this is really a new conversation. At the fund balance policy?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, that's out there. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're creating a new.
Right. But the question is how, I mean, what kinds of information, data, criteria, you know, what criteria do we set up? What rubric do we use formally to arrive at our goal, whatever we set it to be? I, I'm not familiar with, you know, those kinds of planning mechanisms, but it seems to me that, you know, it has to, there has to be something out there that can use this model.
Well, I think in, in one simple sense, as we're working on the budget, you know, we're, we're thinking of two things, at least I, well, lots of other things, but. Two important things, tax cap. Tax cap and measuring up to our fund balance policy. And the tax cap.
So.
And tax cap. So, so we're thinking about the tax cap, and we're trying to weigh decisions, okay, are we resolute in staying under the tax cap? If we're resolute in staying under the tax cap, given the budget situation and given the fu, that, fund balance policy, what does that mean? What kind of tax increase would that possibly mean to us? And so, in a way, it's, it's, it's actually kind of simple, because the fund balance itself is a reflection of what you got coming in minus what you got going out. And that's true for the tax cap as well, I mean, I'm not an accountant, but that's, that's the balancing act here. So the fund balance policy I see as being, I'll just tell it, I mean, back up the same, to me, the tax cap is almost off the table. Because the first priority we have is to ensure that we have adequate and effective city services and the personnel to carry them out. And so, well, never mind tax cap being a political issue in the next year, for me, it's off the table, because that's the priority. But the fund balance policy on your hand is really the guidepost to ensuring that those services are effective and carried forward in the coming years as well. So it's not just about next year, but it's, and so it becomes the guideline for, for what we're looking at in terms of capital projects, for instance. Because, Michelle, you're right, we actually have criteria, right, in the fund balance policy that we wrote in, as we have talked about before. And we, we talked about what the fund balance is meant to be, which is to provide for financial reserves for unforeseen or emergency operating expenditures, i.e. all pipes blowing up, uh, litigation, union contract. i.e. all pipes blowing up, uh, litigation, union contract resolution. And we know how heavy hitters all of these things are, revenue shortfalls, whether it's, you know, uh, something's just not coming in, everyone they have coming in. And then we also add a unique development opportunity. Which is, I mean, that's the Herculean task here, is, because we can't go absolute austerity, we still have to be able to have some, some money for development opportunities, so.
But, but if you list those things, by what calculation can you come up with what, what's sufficient, what's a sufficient bu- buffer? Uh, y- given the constraints of, uh, maintaining those services and so forth.
Do you need a buffer in terms of the percentage of fund balance?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we've already established that the percentage of the fund balance that we should maintain is between five and ten percent. Right?
I guess I'm not, I'm not able to articulate. I'm trying to figure out how you move from one point to another, and what, how you calculate the, the, the steps forward in terms of what you're willing to take away or add or whatever.
Okay, so, uh, this, this would be my question, I hope you're trying not to, I'll try not to reveal anything.
Who knows how close we'll get.
Which is, as we're going, as we're going through the budget,
Yeah.
and we're looking at making ends meet, we're also holding in the back of our mind that decision that it's not just about making ends meet, it's about making sure that we have something more.
Right.
And the calculation depends on how much we wanna build back in and then give them in. So, if we wanna add one or one point five percent to the fund balance for next year, then we don't just work on the budget and make sure it all meets up, but we think, oh, we got another, another extra one point five percent. Now, now, the, one reason why I said I don't think that we really, we ought not to make a decision about what we're gonna do in terms of the schedule, is because we've gotta go through the budget and get there and say, oh, that was a really great idea that had two point five percent next year. But, and then now, are, now we're in the tax cap discussion. If we do that, then we're gonna have to raise taxes five percent. And that's when those balance decisions actually start getting made. We make those decisions, meeting the budget and adding reasonably sufficient fund balance.
I, I think I understand your process.
There's no consideration for the reason of the fund policy.
No.
Okay, that needs to be cleared, no, okay.
No, right, because that's exactly opposite of then in the fund balance, that you don't wanna, you, you want one of these.
Right, just, we're, just, right, exactly, right. Cause that would be an easy resolve.
Yeah, it would, yeah, but then it's fifteen, sixteen percent tax on three percent to meet the fund balance.
Right.
Right, because the fund balance has a certain, if you guys remember the, the person from the offices, I still think a lot about what he had to say. And he talked about, you don't use a fund balance for certain things, because there, there is money that you can get to put into certain things. It really ought to be targeted towards these certain unforeseen, whether they're pricing, sort of development opportunities.
Uh, I was just gonna say, um, about austerity, I, austerity is not a good term. We've been in austerity since two thousand eight, and, and it doesn't look like we're gonna get out. Um, so, I, I would appreciate if we don't use that term. I mean, you, you, you can say whatever you wanna say, of course, but, but, um, I just, I don't know what the definition of austerity is, and I don't know when we leave, uh, rosy times and head into austerity. I think we're already there, I think we've been there for years.
Well, when I think of, I don't think of austerity as a, a condition that you're in, it is an application of, uh, an economic program. I'm thinking of Kansas, right? So, to me, extreme austerity is making no investments, and it's just cutting everything right down bare minimum and just sitting on it. Whereas, to me, there has to be a balance between making cuts and having some development, so that you're seeding in the future, you know?
I always think of one, uh, 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 illustrious city, uh, panel, and he said, he said, very simply, don't expand what you don't have. And I think if we make that our mantra, that we can get through this or any other budget season without any difficulty whatsoever, this, this is all pretty simple.
Let me, let me just advocate for what you said.
Well, let me hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's alright.
I'm sorry.
I'm on a roll. Okay, so, well, I forgot what I was gonna say.
Oh, shoot.
But I will say this, I got a check in the mail this summer for six hundred and sixty-two dollars, and my wife and I had filled it. Uh, but I got to thinking about that. I got to thinking that somebody in my ward used that to make the car payment. They might've been behind them, harping. They might've used that money to catch up on the mortgage. They might've used that money to buy the medicine they needed or put food on the table for their kids. So, I am very much in favor of sticking with the tax cap, if at all possible. And I, I think that city fin- oh, I know what I was gonna say now, city finance is very much like personal finance. You, you save if you can, that's a fund balance. You, uh, you, you have revenue, that's your income. You have expenses, you hope the expenses are lower than your, your income, and, uh, when you absolutely have to and you can't avoid it, borrow money. I think we're at a point now where we need to put the credit cards back in our pockets and say, we have enough development projects. In fact, we've got so many development projects, we can't take care of the old ones. You know, it's like, I'd like to build a new garage, but I also need to paint my house. So, rather than build a new garage this year, I'll paint my house. And that's, that's what I think of with the, this, the, uh, water main problem, um, on the new base. That's paint the house. Build a new marina is build a garage. Well, let's ho- let's hold off on some of that stuff. Let's get our infrastructure where it needs to be. And then hopefully, in doing so, we don't have to raise the tax cap, you know, maybe we don't have to exceed the tax cap. That, that's how I hope this thing plays out this year. I, I'd like to get another six hundred and sixty-two dollar check in the mail next year, and I'd like for every one in my ward to get the same, so, uh.
I don't think everybody in the city gets a six hundred and sixty-two dollar check.
Some people get more.
Some people get more, some people, some people get less.
It's based on your tax. My tax is relatively low. My house is assessed at, uh, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, so, it, you know, we'll have to have more.
Michelle? I, I really apologize for making you a trip, uh, it's terrible.
Uh, I need to show that to you.
Uh, but I was just gonna, I was just going to echo what you said about austerity, and, and the folly of austerity being that you don't wanna cut off, you know, just by your face. There's a certain amount of investment that you need in order to move forward, and we, and we all took that chance when we created those two new positions, like community development director and the next coordinator, um. So, tho- I think I considered those investments, uh, at the time I was thinking of the marina as an investment. But there are other things that I, I need to clarify in terms of, you know, what is absolutely necessary, or, and I, I, you know, I'm not gonna be popular when I say this, and I know exactly who will be really unhappy with me, but I'm worried about those, um, assistant supervisory positions that I thought were just for a period of time. Yeah, that was my understanding, Mike, I mean, you can say.
Look back, you don't look at the budget, you don't, they all started with the kind of answer, they merged two departments, and that's what happened, okay? They had two departments, and first department, it's not one department, it's many departments, it's two, exactly. We have to, you need, you can.
Let me finish my point, please. Uh, I knew at the time there was a discussion about retirements, and retirements not only in the water department, but in the D Q W, uh, but in, you know, sewer, you know, sewer treatment plant. And so, I need clarity about that. And maybe what you're saying is, is gonna, you know, totally clarify everything, but that was my understanding, I don't think I'm alone.
Okay, well, and these kind, these, it's, it's good to, to start having a discussion right now, cause these are all gonna come right out in about the next two and a half months. Um, and I think, if, if, if you'll let me, this has been a long evening. Um, if, shall we, shall we turn to just talk a little bit about the schedule?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, council meeting is next Thursday. And then I think that the pattern that you set last year for the beginning of the budget is a good one. We start with the lower impact in terms of cost to the budget departments, and then work our way up to, you know, to the higher impact. So, um, October twenty-seventh, we can invite, then I'll look at the schedule that we had, or if you have it, you know, probably if you can, someone can.
Well, you see about that?
Probably that has.
I think I do.
Yeah. Well, look at what, what was done last year because that, that was effective.
I reme- Yeah, okay.
Right, right. So, I suggest that we follow that same schedule, and last year we also, uh, scheduled additional work sessions, we met sometimes back at the council. And if that turns out to be needed, then that's a little bit of a.
No, I think that, that, that's, that's, for example, if you're at, uh, Steve, we, we change it, we, no, right away.
Well, let's, let's think, okay, let's, let's, and I'll just keep attaching this, and I'll, maybe I'll try to write out to be more clear about what I'm thinking about the fund balance policy, tabling the tax cap until we have to get there, because we have to make important decisions. And, and Mike, I would just say that, I agree with you, when I don't have money to spend, I don't spend it. Unless, and people do this, unless you don't have money to buy food to put on the table, in this case, you have to follow it.
Right.
Whether you buy a car or it from your aunt, or whatever, so, so.
Let's, let's be real clear, let's, let's be real clear, there, there's a huge difference between maintaining infrastructure, roads, water mains, sewer mains, all that kinda thing, and adding to our, um,
Investments.
our, our physical plan, so to speak.
Right, and, and I.
We don't need to add anything else to our physical plan.
When I, when I said development, um, that to me is just a general rule. Right now, I'm concerned about maintaining services.
A- absolutely, absolutely, me too, Becky. I'm just saying, we don't, we don't need any more infrastructure.
Right.
We can't take care of what we got now.
Then there, there is, but the other thing that we can't forget is that we have a ten million dollar investment grant. And that ten million dollar grant is supposed to provide state money to match other grants to actually carry out development. So, we've got actually three paths, in a sense. We don't, we don't have to go and bond capital projects for this, because we now have the opportunity to place that development on the side. So, for me, that's a non-issue right now. That we don't, I, I mean, because I agree, the way the budget looks, yeah, we're not, what, I'm doing development or something on the back of tax payers. I'm just concerned about what we have, maintaining services.
Right, very good, that, I think that's a, you know, you, when you do these kinds of things, you, you wanna have some kinda philosophy in the back of it. And if our philosophy can be, this year, let's take care of what we got.
Um, I think we have an approach.
You know, we have a beautiful south end neighborhood in Rochelle, Florida, there where all these new homes are being built, and they're beautiful. The developers put a lot of money into them, but the infrastructure there is, is awful. You know, how, how, how do, how do we showcase that beautiful neighborhood as one place to live in the classroom, that the streets are messed up? The water mains are breaking all the time. Those are the kinds of things we need to fix. If we can do that, we've done it. Maybe that's our legacy. We leave a city in really, really good condition for the next council. That would be wonderful.
Anybody else have anything else to say? Alright, this is a start, we've got a long process to go. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thanks, Paul. Are you going down the front door?
Yep.
Could you lock it if it's not up?
Absolutely.
Is he going down here?
I'm going downside too, so I took over it.
Okay. Cause I won't lock it, I'm going out that way too, do you, behind me?
Yeah, be careful. Okay.
I'm totally like, weird.
Bye-bye.
See you next June.
Did you have anybody else to say?
Not unless they ask.
Yeah.
Jason, Jason.
Yeah, he's John.
Jason, wouldn't he ask?
Yeah, he was just kinda reaching out. Yeah, he was just kinda reaching out.